Good morning. I call to order the April 16, 2019, meeting for the Seline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I see. Please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Anyone wish to address the commission?
Karen Shade-Salina. Last Saturday, I sent you all an email of a opinion piece that KSAL did post on Monday. I put before you one of those, one person's response, and I just wanted to say that it shows clearly that just talking about building anything brings up all kinds of issues and voter education is going to be real important. As a positive, at last Tuesday's study session, I was really alarmed that the sheriff wasn't part of the discussion, and I shared that concern with Norman Mantle, and he had told me that the county commission and sheriff's office are working well together, and it might just been the optics in the moment. So we can cancel that letter to the editor, and I would just urge that the public kind of have some idea of how you're going to work together. Is this going to be commission voting, and the sheriff goes along? In 2014, the sheriff led the fight, and then the commission kind of shaped it. So, you know, I would just kind of like suggest that when you know how you're going to proceed, if you'll let us know. And then I had one quick question for all of you, and I hope it's just an easy, brief response. I wanted to know when you were first aware that James Robinson Robertson's option for Greenfield new site construction of a new jail had a $75 to $82 million price tag? Was it on Monday when he presented his report? Was it before then? Did you realize it Tuesday? In terms of, there was so much information, you know? It's kind of like, did you realize that the, when did you realize that the 2014 price tag for a new jail was 26 to 29 million, and when did you realize his, his price tag was 75 to 82? If you'd simply give me an idea, that would, that's all I'm asking. When were you aware of the price, his price tag?
Well, his price tag and what it actually could maybe cost is, could be miles apart, you know?
Oh, I fully agree.
Could be miles apart. We haven't, went out for people, for architectural design or anything. We don't know what we're going to do yet. That's why we haven't pushed this button. We can't, we haven't come to a conclusion among us what, which avenue we're going to take, so, you know, that's where we're at.
Well, and I saw Monte Shadwick nod his head that Monday was when he first heard. My only point is consultants, you got to read the reports line by line and, and take them very closely, and you didn't have a written report yet. And, yeah. The one thing I thought, because Jim Robertson worked with so many individuals, and it might not have been any of you here, but it almost looked sinister as to how that report could get that far along with such a price tag. And that's kind of why I asked. So if you want to go on record now as to when you first heard that number, the public has that as in their record, an awareness of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation with Lori Blake, Executive Director of CAPS.
Good morning, Lori.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Good. Well, thank you for letting me come this morning and share these words of the reality of our community right now. Whereas we are living in a time when disclosures of sexual abuse and harassment are becoming mainstream, child sexual abuse still lives in secrecy and shame. In Kansas, reports of abuse have increased by 59% over the last 29 year, or 20 years, which indicates people are recognizing the signs. That is hopeful. Whereas children have the right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow, whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas by providing safe, stable nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas there were 1,044 cases of child abuse and neglect investigated by the Department of Children and Families in Seline County alone last year. Whereas child advocacy and parenting services provides both prevention and intervention programs designed to reduce risk factors associated with child abuse and neglect while focusing on educating parents and empowering children. Whereas in 2018, 190 child victims of abuse or neglect and/or witnesses to a violent crime received advocacy, a medical examined care by trained SAENSART staff, that stands for Sexual Assault Nurse Examiners, Sexual Assault Response Team, referral to trauma-focused mental health services, and a forensic interview at Chris's Place Child Advocacy Center. These services are delivered through a multidisciplinary collaboration between the City of Salina and Seline County Law Enforcement, CAPS, Salina Regional Health Center, the Department for Children and Families Child Productive Custody Unit, Seline County Attorney's Office, Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and private therapists. Whereas child advocacy and parenting services began as a child abuse prevention coalition in 1978, the agency has a vision of a place where every child is safe, healthy, and strong. CAPS hopes to shine a light on abuse and create awareness and increase support through the following public events. Go Blue Salina, where businesses can empower employees to wear blue or royal blue, blue jeans or royal blue, and collect funds to support CAPS and support awareness by taking photos of employees showing their blue support. Each participant will get a sticker to wear showing they believe every child should be safe and loved. Speak Night is an open mic event for performance of poetry and prose at Ad Astra Coffee and Book House on Friday, April the 26th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we're having Pancakes for CAPS by Robbie's Cheesecake on Saturday, April the 27th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Therefore, you, the Board of Seline County Commissioners, do proclaim April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourage our citizens to lift up a child's voice.
Thank you. This shows that CAPS is another important part of Salina and Seline County, and what your agency does for the community, and we're certainly very appreciative of that. Would other commissioners wish to comment or speak or say anything?
No.
Thank you. We do have a signed proclamation for you, so we appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
And I have something for you.
I take care of some business. Mr. Chairman, I move we declare April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that we do declare April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry. Thank you again. Thank you for all your efforts.
Do you have the proclamation?
You sign?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, we do.
It's right here.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again.
Appreciate you all.
You got to make it official, the resolution.
Right. We're going to go put it on display.
We will move on to item number three.
North Central Regional Planning Commission 2020 Budget Request with Doug McKinney, Executive Director of North Central Regional Planning Commission.
All right. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to dialogue just in the past couple of months. Before we start with the video, I'd like to, since it is completely done now, provide, and I apologize, well, you could have received this electronically prior to.
Thank you.
It wasn't quite ready. In fact, we didn't get our bindings, so you have it in this format. Hannah has, it says, the comprehensive strategies. And, but I did want to give the update and what I call a little bit more detail. Well, one of the first things I'd like to show is what I'd call a brand-new NCRPC video of undertakings in a quick snapshot. So it's a minute, a little bit of an entertainment-type piece, but it will give a little broader view if Kevin has that available, if you're ready for that. That can be presented.
The North Central Regional Planning Commission is a multi-county comprehensive planning and development organization that has been advancing rural Kansas for over 45 years. The NCRPC assists member cities, counties, and area nonprofits with a variety of community initiatives, such as project development and administration, and strategic planning. We address local housing needs by administering housing rehabilitation projects and related inspection services. We provide weatherization assistance to low-income households to increase the energy efficiency of their homes, which reduces residents' energy costs and ensures their health and safety. We help consumers access funding from a number of specialized business finance programs to start, expand, or purchase a business. We also offer three business loan programs. We work with local health departments through the North Central Kansas Public Health Initiative to improve and protect the health of their communities. We also act as the fiscal agent for six regional Homeland Security Councils. Project investments build community response capabilities and encourage citizen safety and preparedness. Through a partnership with the North Central Kansas Community Network, we connect rural households and businesses to the Internet through a variety of services. The North Central Regional Planning Commission believes rural Kansas communities can be more innovative, prosperous, and resilient. Let's work together to make this vision a reality.
So that's a quick snippet of what the organization is now and in part what it does. A lot of little things are underneath that, but that's why I provided this update, two and a half pager, roughly three pager, that can give you a glimpse, and I'd like to go through some of those things that are more specific to Seline County type of endeavors. And as you can see, the listing on there, yeah, it's a new video. It's located YouTube at the ncrpc.org website, and some local places, whether it's a county economic development or a county website, they've also linked it. So they have it on their particular website, and we'd certainly offer that to be possible here in Seline County if you have a place to put it, a link to it. So folks that might have interest in NCRPC through Seline County searches and such. Well, this is what I call the formal request for continuation of the annual dues and the membership, and what that garners you is, is the rest of the story, per se, down below is lots of activities, lots of doings, shown on the video, but the interactions related to all these different services. And the dues process has been ongoing since 1972, when the organization was first founded by Mr. Jim Martin representing Seline County and seven other counties in north central Kansas. Jim Martin happened to be the first treasurer of the organization way back when, so, and James might have been his more appropriate name, but I've seen it listed as Jim and James on meeting minutes in those early days. Well, some of the activities that are listed there, weatherization, that's one of those programs that helps with lower-income households. We've helped with 12 of those in the last year, or in 2018 specifically, in Seline County. At times, it's been as many as 50, and at times, it's been as few as 10, but usually that's $6,000 worth of work, maybe $5,000, $7,000 in a house where a home is being energy-efficient improved. And in some cases, it's being made healthy again so that a family can reside there because it may have some carbon monoxide issues or something else that's not safe. But usually, it's providing some energy efficiency improvements. That's the key for weatherization. And of course, that might be saving energy. Hopefully, it's saving 25 to 35% on energy assistance reductions so that they can use those savings for other things in the, in community, buying tires for a vehicle, or paying for certain school supplies, just basic things like that. Homeland Security, obviously, Hannah, as board member, knows a little bit about that. She hasn't forgotten all that, but she's still involved in that realm of homeland security, and there's a lot of things that goes on in this county as the, sort of the hub of north central Kansas homeland security region, by we're doing homeland security fiscal management for a lot of places, a lot of councils in Kansas, because that's what Kansas Highway Patrol requested of us. We're an efficient process. We're a very appropriate team. We follow uniform guidance. We do things appropriate that OIG likes, Office of Inspector General, that FEMA likes, that Kansas Highway Patrol and KDEM like, all these different agents that care about homeland security endeavors. So we follow the procedures, the process, and we get to help with fiscal agent activities in various homeland security councils. Well, that means some supplies related to equipment for various things, such as the SWAT-based group that's based out of Salina area, or for supporting fire district training, or for a lot of other things that are related to homeland security. But one of the unique things down here is where Crisis City exists, Webster Conference Center, various larger hotels, they can be a focus for trainings. It's a central part of the state, and statewide events take place here. I'm guessing two a month in reality, sometimes three a month. There's different trainings that take place in this, this county, this community, and it's because of the central location, easy access, but it's also a good place to fly in for experts. And some big-time experts come in for various homeland security-related topics, emergency preparedness kinds of things. So a lot of activity happens. And of course, as part of that, eateries are busy, hotels are busy, and other facets of the local economy are benefited. We see a lot of that activity. Now, on the business development side, you see a few things listed there, and some of these are four or five years old, but there's a lot of activity that just takes place here that we can help fill gaps with finance and support. One of the unique things, though, that I want to mention is, I just call it kind of a spark instead of a gap, but it's with the Economic Development Administration project that we've helped with the, being the applicants or the fiscal managers of that, a technical assistance project that involves what I call entrepreneurship-related, maker space development, and fab lab kind of research this past year. It's wrapping up, but a lot of the things from that will go on to continue, like Startup Salina. It's having some growing pains, but it has some opportunities for lots of new things. It's kind of like the One Million Cups kind of entrepreneurship process, but what will come out of that is people with ideas for new business, and/or they will mentor, connect with others who already are in business. And I just think it's a good thing to continue that process. Well, the Salina Community Development Organization will do that, and Salina Chamber of Commerce will team up and be supportive of it as well. So those sorts of things will come about, and actual physical fab lab hopefully will be developed, even already as mentioned, or as you've heard, the Salina Innovation Foundation has some keys or components of that, more on the artistic side, taking place. So the concept is existing, it's just being fostered a little bit further because of this process. We also have some big-time interactions with the federal government related to use of airport authority spaces, and even just other parts of town, like the old Bulk Solids project, they didn't put that on because that's been talked about a lot here in these circles. But those kinds of things are still out there with the federal agencies that were involved with those kinds of projects, even say a Centennial Road expansion from the early 2000s. It seems like a long time ago, 15, 16 years ago, when that was completed, but those kinds of endeavors are still not forgotten by federal agencies on how positive those are. So we have conversations there in what I call a technical assistance, planning, economic development kind of support role. On the next page, under subcategory D, housing programs, well, already mentioned some weatherization. Well, a lot of the housing rehab projects we've helped with the City of Salina, now their value is a little bit higher, a little stronger. And of course, four projects over 15 years, that, some of them are getting a little bit older, but there's activity still. Homes are occupied. We check up on those through county means, and there's just a lot of good things that happen as a house is improved, maybe has $15,000, $25,000 in improvements and valuation improvement, so. Other things that are listed there, you can see some different project planning going on with the Northwest Salina Neighborhood Project that we hope can go forward this fall with maybe some funding proposals, even just little things such as strategic doing interaction, countywide housing placement initiative group. I don't know where that will go, but it's different representatives from around the county as part of a strategic doing and community foundation undertaking. They're investigating what could happen for most of the outlying communities in the county. So we're still involved with that group in some respects. Down below in community development, I thought I'd mentioned a couple of things, such as the joint land use study that is in progress, probably about halfway through the process of this sort of second phase of that activity. And as Mike knows, it's a little quiet in the skies above that Brookville area. Well, it's because winter wind and this process isn't completed yet to sort of allow the Route Phoenix to be more official in nature. Well, the unmanned aircraft are still on base at Fort Riley. We've, the committee has gone over to see those two examples of unmanned aircraft systems that need to get out to exercise and to train, but a lot of the data research we've done with the consultant, Stan Tech Consulting, and GIS information, which is great through these various counties that are involved, that is being compiled and gathered and various research. That way, the route can avoid any certain concerns when the aircraft might be training through the route and coming down towards Smoky Hill Weapons Rage, or even just staying up to 3,000 feet in the air, but making sure that the avoidance of obstacles and other land use concerns exist, so. So that's ongoing. Hopefully, there'll be public forum interaction this summer. And then Innovation Center, strategic doing, Masonic Temple kind of connected. We helped with an application to Heritage Trust Fund monies to essentially preserve keeping the weather out, like weatherization, but it's more physical strength in regards to roof and some window-related work up on the top levels. And we will know within about two weeks, early May, whether Heritage Trust Fund is going to bless that. Other funds are there, so two legs of the stool are in place, but that third leg is very important, and $90,000 was requested from the Heritage Trust Fund to bless that process. But that's just an example of basic project planning, and hopefully, we get to do the project administration management of that, just to keep it moving, but it should happen fairly quick if Heritage Trust Fund blesses it. The challenge is there, as you might know through Register of Deeds offices, not as much money is generated as there used to be in recording fees. And much money is generated as there used to be in recording fees, and that's where the funds come from for the Heritage Trust Fund. And they have about 60 applications. Now, some of those applications, I can just say that they're sort of bare bones, maybe state historic sites, not as essential to communities as that unique facility is, but they'll fund 12 or 13 probably out of those 60. So our fingers are crossed. You can see Assyria projects that we've helped with in the last couple of years, and one that's going right now with the water system improvement down there. And then on the back page, just a few more things, Missouri Pacific Depot Project, it's under reconstruction right now. It's a preservation project, but it's also a commercial facility enhancement, partially because it's in a downtown area, but also because it's a historic-type structure. And it's on the way to being, I guess, I'd say, more historic in nature, and so that's where it's at. It's not deemed as historic as, say, a Masonic Temple, but the process there, the funding's in place, and it's definitely moving towards a good resolve because bids have come in a little bit under budget, and all those different contractors are working on it. And then there's a few other endeavors listed down below, which are just some basic support and interactive things. So I wanted to save a couple seconds or so for time for you to interact and ask questions if you had any, but that gives you a glimpse of more specific things related to the general gist of the video. And with the comprehensive strategies that I handed out, which are also brand-new, they're more of a long-term look of five years of these kinds of activities. And other things that might be on a wish list for our executive board and staff and others that we interact with, be it nonprofit organizations, economic development folks, school districts, other officials of wants and wishes and hopes, but collaboration is the key there, so.
Got a couple of small questions for you. Your staff is totally located in Beloit, is that correct?
We have a Salina office. One staff person is here sometimes during the week and goes to bank meetings and other things, and Beloit's the main office where there's about 10 resident up there. And others are telecommuting from different places, inspectors and other staff.
So you have a total of what, of 12?
Twenty employees, 17 full-time, three part-time.
Okay. On your specifics, on weatherization as an example, in 12 homes in Seline County, how do they go through that process? Who comes forward? I mean, do I say, gosh, I need help? Does it come from a social aspect of it?
Well, it's a combination. It can be word of mouth, but a lot of the agency for families and dependents, they have applications, they know about us, the 2-1-1 system, United Ways, folks like that, they know about us too and make references. Senior centers are a good source, the Leisure Year Center here is a good source for information. They all have applications, and it's online on our website, and there's sort of that word-of-mouth process where neighbors might tell neighbors. It is a first-come, first-served basis, kind of based on geography, because we have to spread it out since we have inherited some region to the west, far west, all the way out to Goodland over the years, and we have to do some out there, too. But in essence, it's inquire, then apply, get all the income verification data in, then our inspectors can set up an inspection and go verify the house, but that could be a year later after application, and then get into the works for the contractor bid solicitation process.
So in other words, an individual could directly apply themselves without going through a lot of bureaucratic red tape, so to speak?
Usually, it's just that agency or that place will hand them an application, and they apply directly. They could apply online, too, so.
And funding, probably is in your report here, your financial, but the funding comes from the counties in north central Kansas along with other things that you've detailed here?
Yeah, through the counties, it's $42,000 annually through the county membership dues. And from the cities, it's, including Salina, it's about $13,000 regularly, 13,000 to 14,000, depending on different cities. Sometimes, there'll be a city or two, like Hoyington now, wanted to be a member. Well, we require them to be a member if we're helping them with a project, which we are. It's a mandated wastewater treatment project. So in that case, Hoyington is paying membership dues to boost that up to 14. That's $56,000 in the annual membership dues, and we use other local funds that we've generated through service fees to match our EDA award, which is the public partnership. And that's where I came to you with the resolution earlier this year in regards to supporting that application, and we've been awarded that, by the way, the $70,000 for a three-year period, so it's 70, 70, and 70, 210,000 total. And then there's other funds generated through the various programs that we have. A lot of times, we'll do the work and get reimbursed in a month, two months, federal shutdown three months later, things like that, for doing those kinds of programs and services. And of course, there's funding from what I call a interaction-type, fee-for-service-type project that we might, well, the Depot is a project related to that, where we have administrative fees, is supportive of that kind of planning. Comes out of the grant funds with a little bit from the businesses involved in some of those undertakings.
Okay, are there further questions or comments from commissioners?
Under the general fund actual and budget, the top two lines are grant income and contracts and local contributions and dues. Which one do we fall under, giving you the money? The grant income and contracts is at $3 million, 3.6 million. Is that from us, or are we the second line, local contributions and dues?
You'd be local contribution and dues.
All right.
Yep.
Very good.
Further questions?
Just one quick one. This is a budget request. Now, is this just, the request is for us to pay our dues?
Yep, that's the standard, yeah. That's how I approach it, and Andrew, Hannah being new over there, I assume that's how we all approach it, so. Yep, it's the standard, $4,000. And city of Salina will have the same. It's kind of interesting discussion at executive board meetings about this kind of thing. Has been probably six, seven years that way, but I've kind of forced it to be more of a dialogue dues discussions in my 12 years in the director's spot, so.
Well, as I told the presenter before you, what, how important your agency was to the community, I also think that North Central Regional Planning Commission is very important, not just to Salina and Seline County, but the entire north central Kansas region. When you look at Salina and Seline County as the regional draw from that area, why we need to step up and be a leader in that process also. So thank you so much for your presentation and your hard work regarding this, so.
Thank you for your time and for your interest, and for sending Hannah every final Thursday. You're welcome to join her at time or two if you want, so.
All right, thanks so much. We'll move on to the next item.
County Appraisers update with Sean Robertson, county appraiser.
Morning, Sean.
Good morning, commissioners. Give you a little update on what we're doing in our office right now and where we're, what we're doing going forward. Currently, we are going through our informal hearing process. We sent out real estate valuations on March 1st, and people had 30 days to call in and set up a hearing. We're still in the middle of those. That was the 30 days just to get their hearing set up. So those are continuing through this week. We don't have a final count. It appears that our numbers are up a little bit from last year, but historically will be below average. Then if people didn't appeal their value at this point, they can have a payment under protest appeal after their taxes are paid in December. But it appears that in talking with people that, in general, simply can't wrap their head around the fact that Seline County real estate market is moving so fast, and I'll get into some of that later. But I did want to go over some comparisons and show you a little bit of what we do. And real estate markets are fluid, and rarely does an overall view apply to any individual property. However, the overall view is what you would want to see when it comes to setting the mill levies. So anyway, our job is to identify the values of each individual property and then educate property owners on what we do and how we get there. I want to make an analogy. To the stock market. In the stock market, the total stock market percent change, I think everyone can agree and understand that that does not apply to each individual stock or a sector of stocks. Some increase at a faster rate than the overall market, some decrease even in an overall increasing market. You know, what you purchased a stock for years ago doesn't have really any impact on the current value, and whether you plan to sell that stock or not doesn't have any impact on its market value. Well, if you'll notice, with these real estate values, we could go down through that line in exactly the same way. The total assessed value percent change of any particular property or overall doesn't apply to each property or even an area. Some increase at a faster rate than the overall market, some decrease even in an increasing market. In fact, for Seline County in 2019, approximately 8,500 properties did not increase in value. The purchase price from years ago doesn't really have any impact on the current value, and whether someone plans to sell their house or not doesn't have an impact on the market Wanted to go through our 2018 final ratio study. That's how we're essentially graded by the state on how well we're doing. What this does is takes our values that were set on January 1st, in this case in 18, and then compares with sale prices that properties actually sold for after those valuations were set. And for the residential market for 18, comparing our value to actual sale prices was a little over 96%, and then commercial properties was just about 95% of our values versus the sale price. Although it's a small sample size at this point, essentially just January and February, our residential ratio is exactly 100, right on the sale prices so far. Commercial, we've been low on our value, but that actually only accounts for three different sales, so that'll even out over time. Wanted to go through the January and February sales that we have seen. The number of sales in 2019 for the first two months is up 17.5% over the same period a year ago, which is the highest, or the second-highest level that we've seen in January and February in the last 10 years. That's just number of sales. Then a sale price comparison, and this is what will catch most people's attention. January and February 2019 sale prices versus the same time period last year, in the city of Salina, single-family homes, that doesn't include multiple-family units, condos, those types of things, the median sale price is up 30% in the first two months over last year. Seline County small towns, I'm sure I'll leave one out, but Assyria, Gypsum, Bridgeport, Smolin, New Cambria, and Brookville, the median sale price of homes in those small towns is up 28.5% first two months of 19 versus the same time period of 18. Rural homes that don't have any ag land are up 11.4%, and multifamily units are up 37%. Just another example of how quickly the market is moving right now. I checked Realtor.com for Salina yesterday. Now, these are all houses that are listed with Salina Realtors. Those houses that are listed by Salina Realtors that are for sale and not yet under contract, there are only 36 homes for sale under $190,000 right now. And I did want to point out that in this case, I use the median to account for some outliers because, kind of along with what we've been talking about, we've actually had the two highest single-family home sale prices in the history of Salina occur within the last three months. So using the median kind of eliminates some of those outliers like that. One other thing I didn't include on here, that ag land sale prices appear to be declining slightly, but since we don't value those at the market value for our purposes, I haven't dug into any detailed study for current prices. So what does this mean? Well, number one, I think it's apparent to most everyone, that percent of increase in these market segments is probably not sustainable. I don't think that's going out on a limb to say it can't keep increasing 30% a year. That will probably smooth itself out as the year goes along. And what we do in our office in order to establish values is we use multiple years of sales in order to smooth those peaks. I mean, if we were to just look at a few months or even one year worth of sales, we would have much more volatile values than we do. And since these, the sales that we're talking about occurred after the first of the year, they do not affect the 2019 values that we're dealing with right now yet. It's just going forward, wanted you to be aware of that. Couple other things that are not on here that's coming up. We will, after we certify values, June 1st, we'll begin some property inspections that we're required to do. Those will actually start in May and continue all summer. We will mail personal property valuations on May 1st. We'll also be doing some Board of Tax Appeal hearings, although it appears like not many. Also, I will continue working with legislators on some legislative issues that affect both county appraisers in particular and the county in general. I've testified on behalf of Kansas County Appraiser Association a couple of times in Topeka so far during this legislative session, so that will be ongoing.
All right, thank you. Questions from commissioners or comments?
Okay.
Seeing none. Administrators, do you have any questions or comments?
I have one question. How complicated would it be to add a bell curve to this presentation? Kind of, you have the average of 95 or 96%, but I'm kind of curious on the dispersion of, you know, some value maybe 115%, some value maybe 85%, including standard deviations of, you know, how that all funnels together.
Yeah, I actually do have that, not with me, but I have it readily available.
All right. That having been concluded, thank you, Sean, again. Appreciate the information, the updates. Is there any other business or comments to come before the commission, from commissioners? Hearing that, I would take a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
And move in the second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. There will be a second meeting following this after a short pause. Thank you for watching.